And good evening and welcome to the, what's this, October 23rd meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. Glad to have all of you with us tonight that are here and glad to have those that are watching at home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand as we have a fourth grade student from Black Fox Elementary, Mr. Jackson Baker, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, members of board, you have received a copy of the agenda and I hope you've had an opportunity to look it over. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Communications, first item on our communications tonight, Senator Shane Reeves. We welcome you to our podium and microphone for a special presentation. Thank you for being here with us. Glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask Dr. Lynda Gilbert to join me up here tonight, please. About a month ago, I had the good fortune of having coffee with her and Ron Washington and Glory Bonner. And at that coffee that morning, we were probably together for an hour and I was there over the course of an hour, she probably either said the word "teachers" or "student" 50 times.
(laughing).
You can clearly see-
Sorry, it's what I do.
I know. But you could clearly see where her heart is and what she does. So I'm Senator Shane Reeves. For those of you that I don't know, I do know a lot of you from the 14th District, that's Rutherford, Bedford, Marshall, Moore and Lincoln Counties. And I have the great honor tonight to present a proclamation, a resolution from the Tennessee Senate to Dr. Lynda Gilbert. I would have had this turned around last month, but I couldn't quite get things done, but I'd like to read a little of this. You can see it's quite long, so I won't read all of it to you.
Just like a little bit, we'll find-
I'll read a little bit.
All right.
Okay? Do that. So, "Whereas it is fitting that we should specially recognize those outstanding professionals who have devoted their careers to providing the highest quality education for Tennessee students. And whereas Murfreesboro City Schools Director Dr. Lynda Gilbert is one estimable educator who has distinguished herself as a professional of the greatest dedication, ability and integrity. And whereas Dr. Gilbert was recently selected as the 2018 Superintendent of the Year by the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, TASS, an honor most befitting her outstanding tenure as the Director of Schools at Murfreesboro City Schools, as it recognizes the positive influence she has had on so many young lives. And whereas by virtue of winning this prestigious award, Dr. Gilbert will now represent Tennessee at the 2019 American Association of School Administrators Conference on Education in Los Angeles, California and will be considered for this National Superintendent of the Year Award." That's next year, right?
It's coming up.
Coming up. "Whereas a native of Murfreesboro, Dr. Gilbert has served as Director of Murfreesboro City Schools since 2010. Under her astute leadership, this district has seen drastic improvements going from school improvement to status to being recognized by the Tennessee Department of Education as an exemplary school district. And whereas in her eight-year tenure, Dr. Gilbert has spearheaded initiatives to hire social workers and build partnerships between schools and businesses. And she's also overseen the district's launch of mobile food and literacy programs such as Chow and Bob Book Bus. Dr. Gilbert earned her bachelor's and master's degrees in music and education from MTSU and a doctorate in curriculum and instruction from TSU. She's extremely talented and compassionate administrator. Dr. Gilbert has worked astutely to foster an environment in which students can reach their full potential both as scholars and citizens. And Dr. Lynda Gilbert is an inspiration to her colleagues and her friendship and counsel are highly valued by those who are fortunate to know her." And there's other good things on this that I won't read, but it is my honor, this is signed by the Speaker of the Senate, Randy McNally, by myself, the 14th Senator of the District and by Representative Brian Terry. So if you would, join me in congratulating her one more time for this.
Glad to have you with us. Come back any time. You're more than welcome.
Having education issues, call me.
Thank you.
And I will tell you, I don't know whether Shane, whether you realize this or not, but I believe it was 1998, is that right? You were the Tennessee Teacher of the Year.
Mm-hmm.
Comes along in 20 more years.[411.03][411.03](laughing). Something else, maybe. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Trejo.
Mr. Chair, here's the rest of communications. Mitchell Nielsen would like to thank U.S. Community Credit Union for their generous donation of school supplies and their generous donation of time and talent. They actually had Columbus stay off and instead of spending that time by themselves or at home, they volunteered at Mitchell Nielsen, helping teachers, greeting the students and just making themselves available to parents who had any questions about savings accounts, saving for college, the path to homeownership. So they gave not only their time, but their money and we appreciate them. Mitchell Nielsen would also like to thank the Mitchell Nielsen Alumni Association for their generous donation of $1,400. Congratulations to the Chef Academy Program for our partner, the Rutherford County Health Department, received the Platinum Level Primary Invention Bright Spot Award by the Tennessee Department of Health because of their help with the Chef Academy Program. So we appreciate Rutherford County Health Department for sure. Murfreesboro City Schools would also like to thank United Way for their Day of Action volunteers who helped spruce up some of our playgrounds across the district. Congratulations to Scale Students Kamala Collins, whose article was featured in the National Honor Society Watson Anthology Magazine. Kamala is one of 43 Tennessee students featured in the magazine. So we love when our students shine. Also, thank you to the Experienced Community Church, who donated $5,000 worth of homeless supplies to the Social Work Department from Murfreesboro City Schools. The items consisted of everything from air beds and pillows to blankets and toiletries. The Experienced Church continues to be a fabulous resource for our outreach department. Additionally, I want to add a few things. Tomorrow, we will be participating in the Southeast Crunch. We've done this for the three years now. We'll be joining schools and individuals across the country and celebrating National Farm to School Month by crunching into locally grown apples. The crunch encourages healthy eating and supports farm-to-school and other local purchasing initiatives. And Sandy Shealy and her team have had to look far and wide, well, just not wide, just in Tennessee, to find enough apples for our students this year. Farm-to-school is also working with the cafeterias across the district to provide tours for all third to sixth graders. Students have the opportunity to see how their food is being made and the importance of eating healthy. These tours are actually being given by the cafeteria managers and have been a lot of fun and a lot of education going on for those students. Just a reminder to all of you, the City Schools Foundation will present grant checks tomorrow in a ceremony at the home of Dr. Sidney and Liz McPhee. The Foundation will present over $63,000 in teacher grants this year. And the school naming contest will continue through November 17th. At this point, we've had over 178 people submit names. Most of them have submitted at least two names, so we have lots of names and we've been open for naming for less than one week.
Mm-hmm.
So the committee will have lots to do. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Appreciate that report. Good communication. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items, most of which deal with policies that we met on two weeks ago for a while and discussed policies? Mr. Ballard?
I have a question regarding the school fees. I noticed that there are, let's see, Reeves Rogers has scheduled an outing to Camp Ridley and the fee is $88.50 per student. How are we, how do, in a situation like that, how do we take care of those students, which I'm sure there are several or many of them that can't afford $88.50? Do we have scholarships or do we have something we can do for-
A lot of times, the schools will have specific fundraising, also with some of our schools, and I have not talked with the principal at Reeves Rogers, but I know they do have some very, very strong community partnerships. My bet is that some of those community partners would step up.
Okay.
I've not talked with Dr. Robertson about that, but that's usually the case.
Okay. Yeah, I would think or hope that something like that's going on. Now, is $88.50, that is for a one-day event?
No, that is the same, very much the same as land between the lakes. Some folks go to Camp Ridley instead or they go to Fall Creek Falls.
Okay. Okay. So it's-
Yeah, almost. I should add also, I mean, just from having been a principal and all the principals I know, nobody ever didn't go because of the money, if that makes you feel any better. We found a way. So they'll find a way.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right.
Your first action item is the compliance report. This is something that's done every year. Basically, it says that the schools and the district are in compliance with all the state laws. There used to be a long list that everybody would check off and now they simply give you the link for the laws and the principals confirm that they are in compliance.
So we're asking, I guess we're being asked to approve a blank form? Tell us my question.
You are.
But the form is provided by the Tennessee Department of Education?
That's right.
So how can we approve their form?
Well, what you're approving is on the form itself, it has links to the state laws. For example, I had a principal who asked about one law that has been passed that will not take effect until May, which has to do with our reporting to parents, what their students need to learn the next year. But this would have to do with things like, if you remember, we have the "In God We Trust" sign, on those kinds of laws that have to happen in every school and every school district. So what we ask principals to do is go through and check and make sure that they are in compliance.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Settles?
So what it looks like we're actually approving is the instrument?
Well, what you're affirming is that the school district, the principals have said that each school is in compliance and that the school district is in compliance with the laws in Tennessee that have to do with schools.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Settles, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Goff.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm going to pass this around because this is the actual document and Ms. Taylor just pointed out that on your, on, she is not able to pull up the actual form, so I'm going to pass this so that you can see it. But it is on the state website and it basically has four links. The principal goes to those links and they look to see the laws and make sure that they're in compliance. And typically, if they're not, they'll call and ask, you know, what is this about? How do we get in compliance? Most of your board policies, though, are going to come out of those laws and so really, if they are in compliance with the board policies, then they're probably going to be in compliance with the state law. Your second action item, every six years textbooks are adopted and this is the, and you have to approve the selection committee, and I'm doing this really for Mr. Marlin tonight, so I'm not sure what questions I can answer, but you do have, should have a listing of teachers who are on that textbook committee and they will be looking at textbooks probably this spring and then advising what textbooks they would like to adopt. With this committee, the way that works is we have to turn into the state what we're, what we are recommending for adoption, whether we purchase it or not.
I have a question.
Ms. Barton?
Do we pretty much do this for every adoption?
Right.
At the language arts adoption, how many years ago that was, did we have a teacher committee at that point?
Yes.
What was the recommendation?
That will be in 2020. The recommendation was what we have now, which is Reading Street. Now, the problem with that, of course, was that they changed standards.
Big problems, yeah.
Big problem. And in fact, I was in communication today with Lebanon to ask them what they were using and they're having the same issue. So they are moving away from their adoption more and more and moving toward unit starters and some other sites. It's a problem across the state. So that will happen in 2020. The state's already talking about that because I think they're aware of the position they put districts in.
Okay. That's one of the things I hear from a lot of teachers, is that they're not happy about, they feel like there is not a curriculum at this point.
Right. And that's what you hear across the state.
So did a lot of other states stay with reading, I mean, districts stay with Reading Street or what did they do?
Well, what Lebanon has said that they were doing is the problem is the rigor is not matching. And so when I asked today about that, in fact, I'll just tell you what, they said we use Journey's Reading Language Arts Series in K-5. It's a good program that we feel matches the standard pretty well, but our teachers are moving further away from the basal and more toward book sets with unit starters. We do have some concerns about the rigor level we would expose our children to if we did not go to a source outside it, and that's what you're hearing.
How are members of this committee chosen?
I would ask Mr. Marlin that, but typically, I believe, and Carissa, do they have to have, there was at one time, and I did not look at this, but they have to have three years of experience. And so I'm sure what Joe tried to do is to get representative from grade level spans and also schools.
Yeah.
Is this also voluntary?
Yes.
I mean, they say, "I would like to be on the committee," and then he has to make the decision if there's, of those that have indicated an interest?
Or typically, he asks, or it may come through principal recommendation. Is that right?
Okay.
All right.
Right. At this point, do, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute. Let's wait, if you wait till I recognize you, then we'll get-
I'm sorry.
Ms. Moore was next, I think.
Sure. I just have one question. I noticed one elementary school is missing from representation on there. I don't see anybody from Case and Lane. I was just wondering if-
Okay. And I can check with him about that.
Ms. Barton?
With the Reading Street, do all the teachers have teacher manuals that want one or-
They should have teacher manuals. The problem is, and some teachers will use some of the stories out of Reading Street, but with any, anything that's on the market right now, except for one that came out last year, then you're going to have a problem with the rigor with Tennessee because the standards are just different. And what happens with an adoption is that you're going to have, they basically are written for the large states, so Texas, for example, but they will, they will tell you that they do match the Tennessee adoption. So there has been some tweaking with that and what happens is the companies come and present to the teacher committee and then the teacher committee makes a decision. Usually, they will have examples of it in the schools so that the other teachers can see it and they'll come back and make a decision. The difficulty now with science, of course, and social studies too, is that things are changing so fast that it's going to be hard to find a basal, I think, that's going to last for those six years. And it's especially difficult if you've adopted a reading curriculum and then the state changes the standards a couple of years later, which they, I believe, 1617, they've changed.
Mr. Settles?
Yes, sir. So I wanted to clarify again that the issue has to do with the state standard changing, not necessarily that we haven't been on top of our selection process, but basically that the state has made a change, which is not uncommon for the state, well, probably any state, but we live in Tennessee. So for those changes to come, and so we're, for lack of a better term, we play catch-up sometimes. Am I getting it right?
That's right. And you're not going to find, especially when there's not a basal out there that's going to match all the standards, it makes it difficult. So it'll be interesting to see what happens. Actually, at the superintendent's conference, they spent about a half-day talking about what their process would be with reading and I firmly believe that the only reason they did that is because, or one of the reasons certainly, I won't be that judgmental, but one of the reasons they did that was because they know the position districts are in. Because I've never been to a conference where you're talking about an adoption that's not going to happen until two years after the date, which that would be the case.
And the other question I had really has to do with, everybody else here may know it, but I don't. At the top, where it says grade name, then there's something that says endorsement code. I understand years of experience, but I don't understand certificate number. There may not be anything that I need to know.
Oh, with a certificate number?
Yeah, no, where it says endorsement code.
Okay. That's going to be what their endorsement would be. So is it going to be a K-3 endorsement? Is it going to be a 1.6 endorsement? Is it going to be a 5.8 endorsement? So those codes are going to match endorsements.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the adoption committee as printed?
I'll make the motion that we accept this committee.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay. Your next item is, it's time for my evaluation and so the board needs to approve the document. I will be getting to, the board members that will be doing the selection, the evidence on 10/30 and then we'll have the resorts, results reported back on November 27th and TSBA will be handling all that.
And let me just interject something here. This evaluation is on last year, so consequently, in talking with Elizabeth and also with the TSBA and the Department of Education, it has decided that those that will do the actual evaluation will be Mr. Ballard, Mr. Settles and myself, because we were on the board during this evaluation time that we're evaluating. Now, you certainly will have an opportunity to look at the instrument because in another year, we'll be coming back and we'll be doing it all over again just as well, so make yourselves available, but that's the consensus and that's what, am I correct, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, Chairman.
All right. Mr. Settles?
I have a question. Have you seen this instrument, Dr. Gilbert?
I have.[1385.13][1385.13](laughing). It's like last year's.
I was going to ask. That's my whole question is, because I don't remember from last year, but did you notice, are there any changes that are significant of note?
The changes that would be here would match also what's happened as far as evaluation due to test scores last year. On the appendix C, I left as many of those that were not directly related, well, they are related, but they're not related either. But then the first part of the document, which is appendix A, this would be filled out by the folks that report directly to me. So your principals and your central office staff that are going to be reporting. I would like, once this is finished, I'd like for us to take a look and see if there are any changes that the board would like to make to next year's. I know that there have been some, there are some model evaluations out there, but this one, this one comes pretty close to what's expected of principals and teachers and I think that's pretty important.
Questions, sir.
Mr. Ballard?
Just as a possibility to include all of the board, would it be, and maybe this is for you, Ms. Taylor, is what is the problem with postponing the evaluation until, say, next, you know, the spring quarter to see if we could do an evaluation for that period with the whole board involved? And I know that there may be, it may be tied to some timing. Certainly, it's not tied to any performance raise or bonus or anything, unfortunately, sorry, Lynda.
No, I don't want that.
But if we could consider that, I'd like to see, at least talk about it just a minute.
So under the law, it has to be an annual evaluation. I do not know when her last evaluation was, but because the law requires the annual evaluation would have to be within a year of the last one.
Mm-hmm.
The reason that it's done now is because of the test scores coming in. So that's the reason that, that it's done in October.
And this was about the time we did it.
It is. It's exactly right.
Settles?
I was going to say that. This was the same time we did it last year and when I first got on the board, I had to wait too. So waiting is just part of it. And I don't think anybody that's newly elected has a problem because you want to have all of the, you know, have time enough to know the answers to these questions, so to feel comfortable answering them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? All right, then I need to have a- All right, then I need to have a
We're going to have to be open-minded. We're going to have to be willing to take risks, to make mistakes. We're, the engineering process, which some of us, it looks very much like the, um, old science prod- process where you come up with a hypothesis and you work out the problem. I was told the other day that we're not supposed to use hypothesis anymore. I'm not sure what we're supposed to use, but nevertheless, it's that idea of working out problems, because if you think about what we do every day, it's working out problems. And so our students need that. It's going to require deep planning on the part of our teachers. It's going to require standards driven for us to succeed as far as what the state wants us to do. And then we're going to have to be connected. So we're going to have to connect content area and we're going to have to connect people. What we have already done, we already have seen success in our STEAM schools as far as student and teacher engagement, and it's all about engaging those students in learning and having them want to learn. We already have looked at our technology and our external partnerships. Uh, our schools have now a drone racing league and most of our schools have 3D printers. And so our students are producing things with those printers. The last two years, we've really worked on the standards and the PLC work. We've really broken those apart and we're making sure that we know them deeply. We've had some cross-district planning already occurring. We'll have some more occurring on November 6th. And then as far as the capacity of the district personnel, um, we have amazing teachers and we have an amazing central office staff. And we are very fortunate to have that. So what's next? Last year, we spent a lot of time really taking our English Language Arts standards apart. We are going to be doing that also with our math standards and with our science and social studies standards, so that we have an understanding of what that looks like. What does that standard look like? What can students do to demonstrate mastery of that standard? And then we work backwards and we plan strategies to make sure our students are learning that standards. We want to look at the scope and sequence, the what and the when of instruction and make sure that it's what it should be. We want to continue to work with cultural competency. That's really important for us, as diverse as we are. And also to make sure that we are focusing on STEAM, because we do know that that really is a building block for the future. More emphasis on questioning, inquiry, engagement, writing, innovative technology. And finally, understanding that knowledge comes with collaborative productive struggle. We're going to make mistakes. Students are going to make mistakes. But most of the time in life, that's when we learn a lot. And so it's important that while we're making those mistakes, that there's the support there to say it's okay to make those mistakes and to move forward. Finally, we want to keep students at the center. Our values are there at the bottom, trust, truth, open communication, focus for our son children, and always focusing on the whole child. So that's, that's where we are as a school district. It's, it's very important that we produce leaders, because I think that's what a good school does, district does. It's very important that we don't just label children, but we also make sure that they're learning and that they're prepared for life, because I think that's what a school, good school district does.
Okay. Okay, because that's what I like to see is it says, "Okay, we did this," just like on some of the other measures we have for academics. But when it gets into the whole child and behavior, I don't know how to measure that.
Right.
And I get caught up sometimes trying to understand, you know, well, are we really doing good or are we just patting ourselves on the back and thinking we're doing that well?
Well, I think, you know, I would say that I don't know that I necessarily agree. When you're working with children, it's really hard to get black and white cut and dried. It's because you're dealing with a person and you're dealing with their physical health, you're dealing with what they bring to school, you're dealing with maybe some mental issues or some mental strengths. So you have a lot of variables and it becomes really hard to put a number on that. Now, the state has put a number on that and we do well as far as behavior. But I guess where I am is I'm not going to be happy until we have children and families where there's no question that a teacher can focus on teaching and students can focus on learning and a lot of the other variables are solved. So I guess I'll never be happy. But I do think it's important for us not to ignore those things. And I think we could because I think when you look at what's measured, it would be easy for us to do that, but we don't.
Yeah, I think if you polled the teachers, and you know this well, but you know, out of, and my colleague to my right here would probably say, if you ask the teachers to name two or three of the top issues, behavior is going to be right there.
You're exactly right.
And so that's something we really need to drill down on. So I appreciate what you're doing for that.
You're exactly right.
I think we all need to understand, and anybody that has worked with children, and Roseanne certainly has, I have, Becky has, or anybody else in the public setting, there are so many things that we don't look at that we can't put a number on that affects this child when they come to school. Those of us on this board, if you just go back and think of the, what were the worst temptations that you had when you were in elementary school? Then you look at the news media and all the things that are happening to young people today with the temptations that they have today, they far outweigh anything that I ever had. And I'm sure anything that any of these board members have had, and most of the people out here, except maybe that young group sitting over there to my left, we just don't understand unless we're involved in it, the temptations and the things that they're going through every day from 3:00 in the afternoon till 8:00 the next morning. And those certainly affect our schools, our test goers, our living conditions, and everything that's around us.
I appreciate the advocacy of this board. I think it's really important for the public to hear the positives that are happening in public education. I think it's really important for teachers to hear the positives that are happening in public education. It's extremely challenging to be a teacher or to be a principal or to be a superintendent or to be a support staff member today. And I think that there is so much negative that if we don't advocate and if we don't talk about the positive, nobody is going to. So I really appreciate this board and the positive comments that you make about what's happening in schools every day because it's vital. It's vital.
Any other questions for Dr. Gilbert? Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I was going to make the comment that I'm really appreciative that our district is keeping focused on our vision and not getting caught up in the debacle of Ten Ready and the testing debacle that we've had over the last three years. Because it would be really easy to just get sidetracked. And I know that teachers do. I've been there. I know you get sidetracked. And my hat goes off to the teachers in this district and the administrators for having to continuously jump through hoops year after year. And I don't think that our district really realizes, especially if you noticed, if you read this and watched this district, those out there that are viewing this PowerPoint that Dr. Gilbert did, all of the contributors to what is happening in our school district, the poverty levels, just the demographics. So I really hope that we can stay focused and do the good job that I feel like our district is doing. We have challenges and improvements to be made, but I appreciate that we've kept the focus on our vision. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item, personnel report.
Personnel report is in your packet. Are there any questions? I will have to apologize. There is a section left off. We usually do one certified leave of absence and that is left off. I apologize. I'll get that to you.
Okay. Any questions on the personnel report?
A comment.
Comment, all right.
I'm glad to see it broken down like this. I appreciate that. And I'm anxious to see the leave of absence as well.
Mr. LaRice, you have a question?
Can you explain what classified means in this context? Classified personnel hired, classified terminations?
In the school system, there are positions that require a teaching license and those positions that do not. Those positions that do not are classified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, enrollment report?
Yes, your enrollment report is good news. We ended the second period. We grew 64 students from the end of the first period. We've grown 73 total since the end of last year. Our attendance rate was 96%. That's still an excellent rate. Our pupil teacher ratio in K through third grade is 19.44. Fourth through sixth grade is 21.14 for an overall district average of 20.08 pupil teacher ratio. The schools, as you know, we're building a new school on the west side of town, which the schools that are over there by it, Case and Lane, Scales, and Overall Creek. And if you look at the numbers on the far right-hand column, Case and Lane has 919 students.
Wow.
Overall Creek, 1,082, and Scales, 1,054. I just point that out because those continue to grow and we're putting the school in the right place to take care of this extra growth on that west side of town. If anyone had any other questions about this report?
Mr. Tadles?
I had a really good one and I kind of forgot it a little bit. I do want to, when I started looking at these large numbers at Scales and Overall Creek, wow. What are our projections for next year, you know, as far as the city? I know you stay so, oh, well, there's Mr. Shacklet. Our growth in that area is going to continue. But I remember, Gary, you saying something about, I want to say my side of town on the north side, that there's, we're starting to, and I know I'm starting to see it, so.
Yes. I don't have that report in front of me, but the Scales and Overall Creek zone have the most lots already approved for construction. And it's well over 200 right now. And that's updated every month. So that's where most of that growth is coming. And then, of course, the north side of town is a lot of annexation of land going on up there as well. So the annexation of land started on that southwest corner and now it's starting to go up to the north side. But it continues. And developers are wanting to be annexed into the city limits, which of course makes them part of the city school system.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In our growth pattern, there are tremendous amount of apartments going up.
Yes, sir.
Taking over the smaller houses, what do we, we figure an average of one and a half students per apartment? Is that a good ratio now?
Well, the apartments vary drastically by the price point of how much they charge, how many bedrooms they have, and the length of the lease that they allow. So to make a blanket statement for all of them would be difficult. The number we used to use in calculating was 11 K through six students for every 100 homes, 11 students. Well, that ratio doesn't work anymore because depending on even on a home, if it's a more expensive home that has more bedrooms and where they move to, that will impact it as well. So we actually look at what's going on in the demographics of each one of those zones to determine what we're going to do. And when I make projections for rezoning, et cetera, I'm looking at what's our past history in that particular neighborhood because that's usually the best indicator. The toughest things are the new neighborhoods and the new apartments. And we've got a lot of apartments, but some are very high price points, over 1,000 a month, like 1,200, 1,500, and some are less. And so it really just depends on each area. Yes, sir.
I remembered. Because I was really marveling at this attendance rate at 96%. And my question had to do with the flu season, which is about to start. Do we have any projections like from the Health Department as far as how crazy it's going to be this year?
Have not heard anything from the Health Department. Typically, we'll drop 1 to 2% during those months. Last year was very unique in that we would have one school that would have a lot that would be out and another school that was, had a lot there. Very different pattern than previous years where it kind of spread all over. It was more spot oriented.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I wanted to point out, and Gary, you may help me with this, but when you look at Case and Lane, you may think there may be extra room there when the public hears that they're, what, 900 and whatever you said?
990.
But that also is a spot where we have a couple of our special needs pre-Ks and also special needs classrooms. And so those pupil teacher ratios have to be lower in those classrooms. So there really is not the room that there may appear to be in that particular school based on the numbers.
Could I ask something? So overall, Case and Lane, Scales, they're all 1,000 student limits? Is that their?
Yes, overall, Creek and Scales were built for 1,000, just as Pittard was. And Case and Lane was also, Case and Lane's design was slightly different. It was originally designed for middle school concept. That's why it's got a bigger gym, more bleacher space. It had locker rooms. And so it was a little different the way it was laid out. But it's also set up for about 1,000 students. Back when those schools were built, the way, they didn't have RTI. They didn't have the breakout things. So we have to use some classrooms and we put multiple teachers in those to work on the RTI instruction model. So that kind of really, every school district is struggling with that if they have a building that was built before the last two or three years, is dealing with that situation.
I was just reading about the state is well ahead of expectations on sales tax this year.
Yes, sir.
So do we get any windfall from, let's say, whatever our percentage is in sales tax, if they far exceed that in the expectations, do we get any kickback on that?
Let me go to the finance report because I do have that to talk about.
Oh, okay.
Chairman Campbell, do you want me to move on to the next?
Yes, you can go right ahead.
Okay, in the overall finance report, where net income is negative $2,324,000, last year at this time, we were negative $2,481,000. So you can see we're really very close to where we were, a little better than we were last year at this time. Sales tax right now, sales tax collections is up $154,000 over last year. So, and that's the first quarter of the year. This is 25%. We have not hit our holiday sales yet, so we're actually hoping that'll increase. And I'll go directly to your question. Obviously, sales tax is up in our area and a lot of areas around the state. The state determines growth dollars in their budget and it's preset, so the state keeps the extra money.
Right, you were going to say that.
With our growth of students and the way the state redid the model is, it used to be you had to grow 2% of students to get any growth money. Now it's you grow any students. The critical periods, the critical accounting is the second period of the pupil teacher, I mean, of the enrollment, the third period, the sixth period, and the seventh period. So we're in the second period right now. So that's a really good number to be up by that much. But six and seven are weighted much heavier in the overall enrollment numbers. They're up around 30, 35%. So we really want to have our growth continue. And that's a good part of the model is it does increase as the deeper into the year you go. But it was good to have a nice jump like that this time. Budgetarily, in revenues overall, we're at 16.1%. Now, last year, it shows we were at 14.6 at this time. But what happened was we did not get the sales tax revenues for that month until later in the year, in October. So it doesn't reflect on this report here. When I gave you the number I gave you about being different, I calculated it and I added it in for, just to make sure we were talking apples and apples and not apples and oranges. So revenue-wise, you know, we're good, where we should be on that right now, really, really good on the sales tax. On the expenditure side, we were at 18.8, last year we were at 18.2. But there was one big difference that we had this year, and that was when we converted over our insurance policies, we had to pay for them in September instead of at the very end. So that was over a half a million dollars went, $514,000 went to pay the insurance in September. So that really offset that, but it'll get caught up at the end. Just that we paid it out now and overall we saved well over $200,000 by our switching our insurance policies. Other than that, the rest of the numbers are looking fine, where we should be at this point.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
There's more?
So the insurance that you're talking about, is that what explains the huge difference in the Board of Education line? I was wondering what that was. That was the insurance. Thank you.
Any other questions on the financial report? Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, any other business coming for this board? I will mention to you that the little cupcakes you have there are provided to you in commemoration of Dr. Gilbert's birthday coming up on Thursday. We'll not divulge the age.
Are we allowed to say?
What, are you allowed to say the age? Are you allowed to ask her?
Can we guess?
No.
982 and a half.
The last time I asked a lady about her age, her right hand caught my left jaw. So I learned not to ask anymore.
Thank you all.
We wish you a very happy birthday on Thursday, Dr. Gilbert, and many, many more. All right, any other business before this board? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. LaRice. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor?
Aye.
And good night.